The Board of County Commissioners is now back in session. Mike, real quick, I want to address the issue of not having a forum for the Board of Adjustment in the Planting and Zoning. Those meetings are being rescheduled?
Yeah. I think we forwarded everything, if I understand from Amy correctly, we forwarded everything to the next month's meeting. Unless the Board wants to try and reschedule something for this, this month.
I don't know what's going on the agendas for these two groups anyways, but I just want to clarify that for the public's sake.
Yeah. We, you know, our normal procedure is to forward everything to the, to the next month's meeting. Unless there's something pressing that has to be done, then we try our best to reschedule the meeting within the month.
Now, the seats on the Board of Adjustment, they're pretty much, we're not missing any members there?
I don't think so. I'll have to check with Amy, but I think it's just one or two. P and Z has missed a few more. It was just an unfortunate situation in both meetings. This hasn't happened in a very long time, that at the last minute, you know, a couple of people canceled on, say, couldn't make it at the last minute. Because we usually call the day before to make sure, and we know at that point whether we have a forum or not, and we did, and everything was going good, it just, you know.
I hate to ask you to do this, but we need, would you get information to the Commissioners on the Planting and Zoning Commission if we still have seats unfilled?
What's vacant?
Yeah, so we can try to move forward and maybe get a couple more members on there so we can eliminate that. I know I asked you to do that, it seems like every three, two or three months, but...
Yeah, that's fine.
If you'll send us...
For both boards.
Yeah, and I think the Board of Adjustment probably doesn't have any vacancies, it just was unfortunate that two of them couldn't make it, the way I'm understanding everything. But if you'd forward the Planting and Zoning information to us once again...
I will.
And if the Commissioners would diligently look at the information and see if we can move forward and get a couple more Board members to try to avoid this not having a forum. Okay, next on the agenda would be Mr. Kurt Blair. Please come forward, state your name to the record.
Morning Commissioners, Kurt Blair. You received two packets from us in your, in your mail, I think. I should have gotten one late yesterday with some information that came in late, so I hope you got it, and we'll talk about it a little bit. In terms of my regular report, our numbers, as you'll see by the collections report, are pretty even with last year. Last year was a real good year, and so I'm not alarmed at all about not, not showing dramatic increases over last year. We're running right at where we were. This morning, as we speak, we're running our, this year's annual hospitality training class over at the East Point Fire Station, which is running cooperation between the TDC and Goodwill, and we've got 20 members, 20 people signed up for the program this morning, which is the maximum that we can handle at any, any given time. And so they're, they're meeting, and we want to thank the Fire Department for making the facility available to us.
Kurt, real quick, I'd like to applaud the TDC for continuing this hospitality program. I know we started it like two or three years ago, and it's been a full class every year. I think it's beneficial to train these people and taking care of our tourism folks when they come to town, so if you would take that back to the TDC Board and let them know how beneficial that I think it is, and I think the rest of the members will agree with that.
That's right. We always get a real good response from the lodging providers, so it's a good, good project. Thank you very much, Commissioner, and I will convey that to the Board. Also, the Board is happy to report that this year the TDC will be awarding two $500 scholarships to students at the Franklin County High School. We had a couple of applicants. The Board selected Ethan Jared Moses and Shazam, Shazmine Wyndham as the recipients. They're both students there, and they're both looking to forward their education, and our Board was impressed with both of them, and we're happy to be able to help them. I think those awards are being made later on this week. If you travel through either Panama City or Tallahassee airports, you're going to notice, especially if you check your baggage, that we have new, new digital signs in both baggage areas, and this update reflects the new website and the modifications to our brand, and I think you're going to like them, they're more cutting-edge than they were. The others have been there for about 10 years, so it's time to, time to change. The next item is, is at your request. Our Board has gone through a, or began a process for receiving proposals or qualifications from potential individuals or organizations that wish to provide services as a vendor to the TDC. Attached, I think I sent to you the, the proposals that were prepared by the county attorney and were reviewed by the TDC last week. They're recommending that you go ahead and advertise for these five vendor contracts, and our Board wanted, there were a series of recommended changes that we forwarded on to Attorney Schuler, which has been incorporated in the documents that you've received. In all, there are five RFQs, one for administrative services, one for web and internet services, one for print media services, local television airtime and video production, and finally local radio advertising. You'll also find attached a timeline that if you approve advertising today, should result in you receiving a group of recommendations by the, from the TDC Board for recommended selections in each category at your August 7th meeting. This process has, is envisioned, that we've envisioned in this, these documents includes advertising, the openings for three weeks, which is the request of the Commission, submission of proposals by June 29th, a review and ranking of proposals by the TDC, and we would forward to you however many recommended suggestions you'd like in each category. We envision three, but that's entirely up to you. Our Board decided, you know, that you ought to be able to make them.
Okay, Kurt, let me interrupt you right there. How does the Board feel on, on that particular issue? Do you want the TDC to bring you the top three candidates? Do you want the TDC to bring you the top three candidates with their recommendation? How does the Board want to proceed?
I'm going to tell you how I would like to see it. As it had been in the past, the, the TDC on the vendor's contract has always made a recommendation to this Board, and that's the way it is. And that's the way it has been in the past, and they've always done the top three with bringing the top one and looking to the Board, and then go into negotiations with the top one. If that don't work, then go down to number two. If that don't work, then go down to number three. That's the way it's always worked. I like it like that. We've been doing it since the creation of the TDC and anything else. I think we basically do it whatever way we had to, you know, come in it, but I like it like that. Bring the top three and then work it down from one to three. You know what I'm saying?
Any other comments from the other Board member?
I agree with that. I just, I still don't know that, I still don't know that, I still think that before we get to the final, I would rather see us stagger these somehow. I don't know if there's anywhere we can work it out, and I'm not trying to put vendors out in front of the Administrator, but I, I would love to get away from doing them all at the same time. I know we can't do it this time, but we can set it up for the next time to be staggered while we're doing it.
Staggering the vendor contracts?
The vendor contracts from the Administrator.
Oh, okay.
They can still be two-year contracts, but they can be alternate, just like they do with the Commission. I mean, it's alternate years. There's never a time that we, all five can possibly be replaced at one time.
Yeah, there was some, there was some talk about that also, and one, one conversation there at the TDC meeting last week, and Kurt, correct me if I was wrong, they, some of the members were concerned that you, if you limit it just to all the vendors for two years, you may have a big turnover, then you won't have anybody that knows what the right hand, left hand's doing, you know what I'm saying? So that's what they were saying. It would be nice if you could have it, instead of like a two-year period, do it one, four, four-year period, or something like that, and stagger.
There's something staggered, but anyway.
Right, am I right, Kurt?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Well, now we got them on two years, right?
Right.
Right.
Yes, all of them, all of them that are before you this morning will, would be for two-year periods. If you wanted to begin alternating them, you could take Administration this year and do the others next year, or just renew the vendors, you know, for another year, that's possible. However you want to do it, but I think our Board thought you all ought to set the pace for it.
Okay, so what we're going to do this year is proceed the way we got it going. Sometime next year, we can look at it and then identify the vendors that you want to do four years and the vendor that you want to keep at two years, creating that stagger that the TDC Boards want to see and the Commissioners want to see, but let's don't, let's don't, let's don't do that this time, because the timeline he's got, we'll get everything done at the right time, and then we can implement everything October 1 when the budget starts.
Well, and I like, I like the comment that you made at the last meeting when we were discussing this, Mr. Chairman, and as you do on anything, you know, you said, you know, those people that's been doing their job haven't got nothing to worry about. You know what I'm saying? We say that all the way around. Hospitals, county offices, we say that all the way around. Even if they're their job, you don't have to worry about it as long as you do your job, you know?
That's correct.
So that's the way I, you know, I feel. So anyway, I like the idea, and, and I may not be, I may be here, may not be here, you don't ever know. But I would like to know that this Board has an understanding that we can't just do everybody the same way. We've got to stagger it for it to be, for you not to lose some of that institutional knowledge that y'all have with the TDC.
I agree, I agree with that, but I don't want us to stall this process that we're in. So the suggestion of, do you want the TDC to recommend?
What'd y'all think about my?
I think it's sort of what Commissioner Sanders said to do it.
I know somewhere in this, in the, what I've been reading here is, is that when he gets to the Administrator, is it just the Administrator's, Kurt, or is it all these contractors that the Board should not enter into a conversation with? All of them? All, whether they're a vendor or whether they're an Administrator. I just want to point that out to the Board, that if they call you, want to have a conversation, you're not supposed to have a conversation. Is that correct?
That's right.
As, as it relates to this process, obviously, you know, you have vendors that may have to talk to you about other things.
Like if you want to picture the Oyster Man or something, you can call whoever does the print and say, oh yeah.
I would like to suggest to the Board that, that we, we go with what Commissioner Sanders was saying, is rank them one, two, and three, and if you don't, can't enter a negotiation with one, you move to number two. Other than the Administrator, I would like the Administrator to give us their top three, get the information to this Board, have the top three come in for an interview process or whatever.
Yeah.
The vendors, leave it, as Commissioner Sanders suggested. TDCs would bring us the top three and their number-one recommendation, we would negotiate with that vendor if we can't, then we go to the second and the third. The Administrator, I would like all three, top three candidates brought to this Board. That, that's my opinion.
And you don't want those ranked or by the TDC?
Correct.
You just want to see the three, okay.
Correct, correct. That way we look at their resume, we'll bring them in for interviews, if that's the Board's desire. Pick the Administrator, the vendors would, would go the way Commissioner Sanders suggested that we always do.
And then the Administration, we would interview them and...
That's correct, that's correct.
Michael, do you mind doing something? Can you go cut that air conditioning on? It's kind of hot. Okay. She says it's...
So, I mean, that'd be the pleasure of the Board, we need action on...
Commissioner, just so that I understand, so that I can tell the Board, they will do on the, I understand the, the other vendors, but on the Administration, the Board would rank, not necessarily interview, because the ranking process allows them to rank without lengthy explanations, there's a lot of information they've got to submit anyway, so, but have our Board look at them, they can, they can rank them, and then, but send you without the ranking, the Administrative.
Top, top three.
Top three, okay.
And then we'll look at their resumes and be pleasured to the Board.
And you want to interview those people at your meeting?
I think that's probably the way to do it. Kind of like we do with a, you know, we'd have to bring one in and let the other two, you see what I'm saying?
Yep.
Kind of like we did with others.
Well, and I understand your, your point, Mr. Chairman, because the Administration contract is quite hefty, and so we want to make sure, you know, yeah. So that, that's good. I mean, that's good with me. Y'all want to take a motion on it?
Absolutely.
Let's do a motion that, that we do the, and I'll go back, Ms. Lori, if you have problems, let me know. The three top administrative applicants will come from, from the TDC to this Board, and we will interview them, and then we will decide who's going to be hired. The, the ranking of the vendors' contracts will be one, two, three by the TDC with that recommendation coming to the Board.
Is all the Board members comfortable with that?
That's my motion.
Everybody, you comfortable with that, Mr. Lucker? You comfortable with it?
Yeah.
Okay. So we do have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? Michael, you did this, you did prepare all these RFQs and you...
I'm, I will have to amend the admin RFQ, but that's not going to take very long. I mean, that, the first advertiser cannot make it to the paper till next Thursday, so the process is applicants would see the ad in the paper, notifying them to pick up the RFQ package. The RFQ package will be available either here at Mr. Marone's office as a hard copy or available for download from the county's website, but the point being, the changes that you have directed here this morning will be made before the advertisements are published next Thursday.
Is that going to put us behind him?
No.
That, that's stay with the same timeline?
Stay with the same timeline.
Let me, let me add some announcements, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. There was some discussion at the TDC meeting the other day, general, a newspaper of general circulation is what the requirement is to advertise, right?
Yes, ma'am. I've been told the TDC's made a more, a decision that will advertise more broadly than that's what I've been told, but I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know.
Well, they did, and I, and I, I suggested the Florida Association of Counties website that they have all, but this is not going to be a county department, it is a, you know, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I read that, where they were talking about going into advertising in different places here, and...
But advertising in the local paper will meet your legal requirements.
Okay, okay.
So do you want a Florida Association of Counties, Appalachian Regional Planning Council inclusion?
They have, Commissioner, they all have distribution mechanisms that they have, that, especially the Association of Counties, the billboard sort of thing that could get them, get the advertisement around the state.
Yeah, all we've got to do is just get Michael to send the notification to the Florida Association of Counties and the ARPC.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and that would pack, and then we could say, hey, we looked at a broad spectrum of it, so...
We do have a motion and a second on the floor.
We do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Commissioner, one other item that I got to you a little late, you know, we have the, the St. George Island Visitor's Center, and, and last September, you authorized that the Chamber, the Appalachia Chamber would, would also oversee the St. George Island Visitor's Center. At that time, you, you approved some repairs to be done, which were done during the transition. Couple weeks ago, I got a call from John at the Chamber that said that the electricity, he had a problem with the electricity, and, and he arranged, arranged to get it fixed. It was $300. I told him that was fine, it sounded like it was an emergency to get done, or didn't want any loose wires hanging down or anything, so I told him to go ahead with that, and they're done, and you'll receive in your packet the, the invoice. Our Board has approved it at, at their last meeting, and we have it before you today. It was $300, and he had Kate's Electric do the work, so...
Pleasure to the Board.
Don't move.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lucker to approve the expenditure of $300 to fix some electrical issues at the St. George Island Visitor's Center. Do we have a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Massey, Mr. Marone?
Before we proceed, Kurt, only one thing, I was talking to Finance about that yesterday, is that, that's a county building, so would it be more direct that with any other county's billing that we just deal, if there's a problem, John just lets us know and we deal with that more directly? Or, I'm just trying to cut out so many steps just to deal with something that's probably easier for bookkeeping for the Finance Office also. Is there issue with that?
No, there's no issue, Michael. In fact, Lyndon and I talked about that yesterday, and we just didn't have any procedure in place for how we dealt with maintenance at the St. George Island facility. The last few years, when George Floyd had it, we never got a bill, so we didn't, we never had to deal with it, but I, I don't think the Chamber has quite the finances that George does, so it may make the difference, but...
So you're saying TDC shouldn't pay for this, that the county should pay for it?
We could do it this time, and just in the future, now we have a policy, John could just call me, and I, we'll, you know...
In other words, we're reimbursing the Chamber. The Chamber should have sent the bill for Kate's Electric straight to the office and not us reimbursing the Chamber, because our building.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it just makes it easier all around.
Whoever's paid for it, TDC or whatever, doesn't matter, we, the bill just should have went straight to them.
To me, it would sound like it'd be a lot easier if they just submitted it to the county.
Yeah.
So you'll get with John from here forward and even know what protocol and procedures is?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be easy for everybody, to be honest.
Don't he pull the call out with a maintenance man?
That's what we'll do. That's how we'll, we'll handle it. It's like we treat any other county building. Yes, sir. Exactly.
But for this particular time, we, we're going to proceed. We do have a motion and a second on the floor.
Thank you.
Yeah, he just, I mean, they, well, it's the first time, and he didn't know, so...
Any further comments? We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Blair?
That's all I have.
Anything for the, for the Board too, Mr. Blair, this morning? There be no further comments? Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you.
Let's see where we're at.
We've got five minutes.
We're down to Madam Clerk.
I don't have a report, Mr. Chairman.
No report from Madam Clerk today. We want to take Ms. Whitman.
Mr. Puckett already gave Allen's report, number one, A and B, so I'll start with number two. And informed the Board that Allen had numerous phone calls with FEMA representatives on Friday, May 4th, and FEMA appears to be diligently working to get the PW, PW 228 for Alligator Drive, approved. In those discussions, it was agreed that FEMA would separate out the emergency work that the county has already done fixing the road and including funding for the traffic signals that the county has already been paying for since last year, and allow the county to get reimbursed for those items now. Allen signed Pam's name to this new PW, and a copy is in the Board packet. The new PW is for Category B temporary work, does not have a PW number yet, but the value of the temporary work is 147,601,546.
So let me, let me ask a question, Mr. Chairman. So where are we at with the PW T-28 for the Alligator Point Road? We're not there? I thought we were there.
Allen will have to get back with you on that.
Okay.
I'm mostly just reading today.
So you're just giving his report now?
Yes, ma'am.
So you don't know nothing? Okay, I'll have to wait.
I can try to figure it out for you, but I'll let you know.
Real quick, a lot of this on the, these lights, we've been taking out of Ballpoint Trust Fund, and that will be reimbursed to the trust fund for the money that's been used for those temporary traffic lights.
Yeah.
All right, number three, Mr. Gray Dodge, DEO Policy Director, provided Allen with the following response on why only the eastern part of the county was designated an opportunity zone. DEO's economicist used a combination of data and project requests to determine the zones. A statistical model was created using census tract data and other economic indicators such as poverty level, unemployment rates, and population density. DEO used a proportional method of nominating tracts so that every county received at least one census tract nomination. Franklin County was designated to receive one opportunity zone nomination. Of the two eligible low-income census tracts in Franklin County, the tract that was nominated has a substantially higher unemployment rate and a higher poverty rate. Nominating areas that are more economically distressed as opportunity zones will lead to a greater positive impact on the area.
Now, to give you the rest of the story. So, since Allen has written that and Whitney just eloquently read that, item 11 of my report, based on this affair's inquiry to the Department of Economic Opportunity as directed by the Board, as to why the eastern end of the county was the only area to receive the government's qualified opportunity zone, I received an email from Mr. Dodge of DEO. This email offered the county an opportunity to switch that designation from the nominated census tract on the eastern end of the county to a census tract in the middle of the county. Unfortunately, the deadline for this request was, was at the end of Business Day on Thursday, May 10. After confering with each of you individually and getting a clear indication of what area of this central census tract covered from our county planner, Mr. Kuratin, I sent a letter to DEO requesting this change from the eastern tract of the county to the central tract. Mr. Dodge indicated in his email that the county's western census tract was not eligible for this designation, and that basically is what Whitney just read, why it's not. Because I know many of you wanted to know, wouldn't this be a perfect situation to help out the airport? But they said no.
Airport, East Point?
Yes. So, basically, I, I need a Board action ratifying the Chairman's signature on this letter, because I had to meet that deadline of May 10.
Pleasure to the Board. Second.
I like the motion, he makes the second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
How years' service began.
I do have some discussion. I mean, I don't under...
I'm upset about it.
I got, I got to go along with what they said, but I don't understand, they, smaller this county is, they got chicken, chicken too. The whole county is in this situation.
True.
Why is they separated in three different parts? I mean, that's for them big towns, that's not for these small counties like this. I mean, we got, we unemployed all over the county. I mean, just take a look around, from east to west, to north to south, and I just don't understand how they do it.
I don't either. I don't think anybody does.
No, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, Michael, you're telling us that, that Gray Dodge, whatever his name is, right?
Correct.
Said that he could not, that that area that we said it go from Carabel to the other side of East Point was not eligible? Or was it eligible?
No, it'd be from the...
It'd be from two bridges, isn't it?
Yeah, over to, to the end, to the, to the western end is not eligible. The western end of the county is not.
Okay, that's the Appalachian.
Yeah.
But now, thought we looked at another thing, that it's a possibility it could go from Carabel to East Point in there, in that area.
Well, that's, that's, that's what we switched to.
That's what we switched to.
Yeah, he agreed to that.
Yeah, that is eligible, yeah, that's what he switched.
Okay, okay. I was just going to go to the eastern part of the county, and I'll tell you the reason why. We don't have that much land over there that is private land that you can build something out. You've got, you've got Green Steel, but it's west of Carabel, see?
But the odd thing is, the Green Steel in the Carabel Airport is now in it.
And they weren't before.
Because it wasn't before.
Yeah, because we asked for it to move. Yeah, yeah. Because, see, I was worried, because many years ago, this Board designated an area with, amongst ourselves, that the East Point area was our, was going basically to be one of the, you know, one of the commercial districts of our county. You remember that, Michael? We did that, because, and that's what I'm saying, low poverty and all, in the eastern part of the county, you got your retirees there, you got your second homers there, and so now you've got it from Carabel. So that'll be good, that'll be good right there. That's the point I wanted to do, because I didn't think we needed to do that. And if you did it by the census tracts, some of the census tracts on the numbers were wrong, and if y'all remember, I challenged Washington DC and won on it many years ago, because they had gave me a population of Gulf County and had gave Gulf County no population because I don't, didn't have any in Franklin County on that side.
They don't make mistakes, come here. I'm just kidding. I was saying, they don't make mistakes in DC.
Yes, they, yes, they did. Yes, they did, and they admitted they did. So I'm glad to see, I'm, I'm glad, Mr. Chairman, that stuff works out. I wished it would go to the airport, though, but we can't do that.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor?
I have one more comment.
Yes.
I just want to express publicly that my biggest concern about moving this was making sure that Air, Carabel Airport and Green Steel was going to be included.
Yeah.
Because you're looking at a thing on lines, you can't really tell where the lines are.
I had to go to Mark.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want it to be something that was going to be an East Point only type thing.
Yeah.
And so, anyway, just wanted to throw that out there.
Any other comments from the Board? We do have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.[1768.12]
All opposed, the motion carries.
All right, number four, attached to this report are the latest landings from all aquaculture leases in Franklin County and Wacolet Counties. These figures were generated by DAX and Allen received them last week. The leases for Franklin County would be the Alligator Harbor lease area. The data shows that there are currently some non-productive leases and the columns of clams or oysters harvested do not indicate pounds, but the number of individual oysters or clams harvested.
Jesus Christ. I was gonna say, good job.
Why do you talk if I can't answer them?
You did, you did good.
Does the board have any, any comments? Any comments from Ms. Whitman this morning? She is really excited to get back to her seat.
You done good.
You done good.
Thank you. Next, next on this agenda would be, uh, public hearing, land use and rezoning. Here's Ms. Amy.
This morning, we had a land use and rezoning, uh, public hearing. It's a consideration of a request for a land use change from commercial to public facilities and a rezoning from Summer Camp PUD, commercial, to Z-one public facilities on property described as tract D, Summer Camp West, phase one, A and B, St. Teresa, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Jeff Stoffer, agent for Florida State University Real Estate Foundation Incorporated. And I do have a location map. There's the FSU Marine Lab and it's the property just to the, to the west of, um, the Marine Lab. It's this property, it's three point nine-nine plus or minus acres. And it's the pleasure of the board.
Pleasure of the board. Public comment? Public comment, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Public comment on this issue? Public comment? There being no public comment, pleasure of the board?
Uh, I just want to say something before we make a vote on this. You know, this is part of the commercial district of Summer Camp, but they decided they couldn't make nothing of it. So I, I like the idea of the, of the public utilities going from the, that. And I, if there's no other comment, then I, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Likely. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? The motion carries. Next would be land use?
The rezon should be next.
The rezon?
It would be a land use, um, a rezoning from Summer Camp PUD, commercial, to Z-one public facilities on a property described as tract D, Summer Camp West, phase one, A and B, St. Teresa, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Jeff Stoffer, agent for the Florida State University Real Estate Foundation.
Same move, Mr. Chairman.
Public comment? Public comment?
Sorry.
Any public comment on this issue? There being no public comment, pleasure of the board?
Same move, Mr. Chairman.
Second by, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? The motion carries.
I have to say that with Whitney kind of kicking my feet.
We have a gentleman at the podium, any comment?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Amy?
Yes, sir, um, Michael, um, asked me to get the rosters for the Board of Adjustments and the planning and zoning, um, the members and, um, I'll just hand those out. Um, we do have, um, two alternate vacancies on the Board of Adjustments and we have, um, Mr. Gill, he, um, he's one that doesn't come as often. So I'm not sure of his interest. He is actually a member.
Who is this, Mr. Gill?
Gil Altry, he's been on the board, um, since two thousand and six, so he's a longstanding member.
What, he doesn't maintain?
But I think it, between his work and his health, um, he has not been able to make several, several meetings. And Mr. Joe Hambrose, his health is, um, declining. But he's, he's definitely got the, the knowledge, his mind is very clear, his body's just not as, um, as strong.
So there's actually your suggestion that we actually look at two new members?
No, um, I'm just giving you the, the roster showing you, um, we did not have a quorum for the Board of Adjustments and we didn't have a quorum, um, a couple of times, um, in the past year. So I'm just giving you a heads up that we do need some alternates, um, to, to be placed on the Board of Adjustments.
Okay. Five, and you need three, three to have a quorum.
We have to have three to make a quorum.
Could I, could I make a suggestion, Amy, that if, if Mr. Altry is not going to be able to, you know, participate, then we need to know that so that we can not get in a, an alternate, but get in a, another one.
Okay, I will, um, give him a call.
It's really hard to get the alternates to show up, because a lot of times they show up, they're not, they don't participate, you know? But if we got a member that has got a, and you, and you, I say you got his phone number and all, you can touch bases with him and, and let him know what we're looking at and if they're unable to participate or, or unwilling to participate, then we need to know that.
Okay.
And get that information out to the board members where we can try to replace somebody on, on this board. So if you got somebody that's out sick, the three members that are normally there, then you got somebody else that might could help fill this form on the P and Z.
On the planning and zoning, we have, um, an at-large, we have a real estate, a seafood dealer, and a science, um, that's vacant as well as an alternate, a, a second alternate.
Real estate, an at-large, a real estate, seafood dealer, and what was the last one?
Science.
Science.
Yes, sir, and we do have an alternate position that's still open.
Okay. Could you, I asked Michael, and I hate to keep asking y'all this month after month, but could you send that to our iPad?
Okay, we sure will.
So, so the commissioners can look at it and maybe we can come up with some ideas of how to get some additional members there.
Yes, sir, I will have that.
That way we don't have to keep delaying the public when they bring something and you don't have a quorum and then they have to go off for another, another month. And it's been a, a sticking point for the public for, you know, I mean, I know we're doing the best we can do and I don't want to, I'm not in favor of bypassing the protocol procedures that has always been in place.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to bypass and bring things straight to this board without going through P and Z.
That's right.
But we, we as commissioners need to look at the positions that need to be filled and diligently work to fill those positions to keep from having the public wait an extra month here, there during the year. Uh, I think the board probably pretty much agrees with me on that, on that issue.
Well, maybe if we give them some kind of military, I mean, you know, people driving from Alligator Point, we ain't behind the gate. Give them some, I mean, they, it's hard to get somebody to do something that. True, that's what I see. Dedication ain't, don't come. Dedication is a thing of the past.
You may have a point there, but anyways, if you get that information to us.
I sure will.
The board would appreciate it.
I will do it, thank you so much.
Any other comments from the board from Ms. Amy this morning? Let's move down the agenda then to-
Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. We done, Ms. Whitman, Mike Marone.
Here we go. All right, let's go straight to one C. As of Monday, May fourteenth, the cash balance in the operating, I'm, I'm sorry, we're talking about Weems. Weems Board, the cash balance in the operating account is a hundred ninety-four thousand, seventy dollars. Cash balance in the money market account, savings accounts, I think it remains at seven hundred fifty thousand, sixty-four dollars. D, both Sacred Heart and TMH are still working on their responses to the, to the request for the additional information regarding their proposals. We've been discussing that for the last two, three meetings. Uh, item E, lifeguard EMS representatives would like to meet with you individually on Wednesday, May thirtieth, to discuss their EMS service. Let me know of your availability for that date and I will schedule, uh, one-hour meetings for each of you to sit and talk to them. F, I'll be attending a town hall style meeting at Weems tomorrow at nine AM. This meeting would allow me to provide accurate information to the employees regarding the Sacred Heart and the TMH proposals, the CEO change, and respond to some of their other questions and concerns. Not, I myself not big on social media, but I've, I've been told that there's a lot of misinformation out there in social media and I would like a chance to just directly speak to the employees at Weems and see if I could straighten out as much of that as possible.
Mrs. Chairman, yeah, I'm with you on that, Mike, because I'm getting calls and and they up there with rumors, talking about everybody gonna be going this and that and the other. I said, well, where you getting your information from? I said, we asked for different thing, I said, well, ain't nobody met with nobody, how they know what this gonna be and that gonna be? You know, tell them to do their work and stop doing, tending, worrying about the rumors. If, if they take enough time on focusing on their work out there, they'll be way ahead of the game. They focusing on who gonna be there and who not gonna be there and the bills getting way behind because they still not doing their work.
I think I made that statement a year ago when all the employees piled in here. I said, if you're doing your job, you probably gonna have a job. If you're not doing your job, you might want to start looking for a job.
You did, you did, sir.
And that's basically what Mr. Likely is saying, just focus on your job, not fake news. Uh, you know, we have a lot of that in our federal government right now. The fake news and the Twitter and the social media and, and most of it's not factual. And I also know the, uh, the Facebook posts and stuff you're talking about.
Yes.
Heard a lot about that, uh, as well as some of the government commissioners. And that's where the rumors get started, basically to me, it's all fake news. I've never been on Facebook and don't plan on going on there this morning or next week or next month because most of it is fake news. People say stuff about you on Facebook and see you in a grocery store, want to shake your hand and slap you on the back. That's why I don't Facebook, because if you're not man enough to tell me to my face, don't put it on Facebook.
That's right.
And then shake my hand next time you see me. You know what I mean, it's ridiculous and I ain't got time for that. So I, so I don't Facebook myself, never have and I don't plan on doing it tomorrow.
I'll tell you what I like to see them, if they find out who doing it, give them a recommend the first thing and if they do it the second time, walk them out that door. That'll stop some of it.
That's right.
David, you got a comment?
Yeah, Dave, Mr. Chairman. Michael, you are the chairman of the hospital board. Am I not?
So attorney, attorney, she'll keep stopping.
Until Mr. Fixit, fixit, okay. You are the chairman, that gives you certain rights and privileges. And if you feel like that's something that needs to be addressed, address it.
Yes, I'd like to keep the board informed of what I'm doing.
Always.
Communication.
Always.
I'll be honest with you, I would like to see us entertain, not just for the hospital, this problem needs to be county, but especially because of some of the things we're discussing here this morning. I don't know why as a county we don't have some kind of internet, cell use, and social media policy, especially as it affects the county they're working for. And I'll just throw that out there because I think it's, you know, times are different now than they were. And the worst thing we can do is do nothing about it and let things, you know, because what are we going to do if and when it gets to a point where somebody does respond to a post?
I know what you're talking about.
Then, then we're too far to respond because we don't have anything in place. You know, I mean, and it's, I, I'll be honest with you, sometimes you have to walk away and count to a hundred or two hundred or what, you know, whatever number it takes to get to.
He's learning fast.
But it's, it's, it's the truth of it. Uh, but also when we're still on the, Mr. Chairman, when we're still on some Weems issues, I, I would like to ask a question this morning, what can this board do about some kind of temporary emergency help for our EMS? We cannot continue to have days where there's one ambulance in this county and we've had those and it's caused problems.
Well, now, by our funding for the ambulance for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Commissioner Jones, we are supposed to have three ALS units running in the county, right, Mr. Marone?
Based on the funding.
Based on the funding, that's what was told to us, that if we give seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, because it was five oh five, five hundred and five thousand dollars, we would have three ALS units running. And I know the situation you're talking about and I'm mad as fire about it.
Well, I didn't want to discuss all that, but I would, yes.
But I mean, I'm mad about it, I think we all are. But we have got to see, you need to go a step farther and say, what? We want to see the records of the ambulances on that particular, I want-
Reports.
Yep, I want to see the ambulance report and I want to see this, where there was, where there wasn't.
In reference to the incident over the weekend where all, what both of you are referring to?
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah, that's one, yeah, because I think you might have been storied too. Yeah, I think you might have got storied too.
Before we, I mean, proceed with what the commissioners are telling you, Michael. But, uh, in my conversation with the new CEO, was, a lot of it was directed towards that. And he's the man at the top. If it ain't run right, it's because of employees under his direction. So I, I, you know, I'm just throwing that out there, but you can't go back, we can only go forward. And I don't know what the other commissioner's comments was with the new CEO, but I know that was my con, one of my comments that I strongly reiterated. Anything that happens that's under the umbrella of the hospital, the buck stops at the top. All these employees, one way or another, work for him. So I reiterated that and he agreed with that.
He agreed with it.
So, you know, we may be moving forward here of actions taken here this morning and we can't go back, we can't go back next, last week or three months ago. But we can, uh, and I think the new CEO will be a little more vigilant in, in taking care of some of these issues.
Well-
And, and it all starts at the top.
And I, and I agree wholeheartedly because I think my conversation was the same conversation we had with him and the rest of the commissioners. But my thing is, if a certain employee told our administrative director certain thing, we need to check that out, and if it was not true, then that needs to be passed on to the CEO.
Or walk him to the door.
For him, huh?
Or walk him to the door.
Like Mr. Noah said.
Walk him right on that.
Yeah, if he, if he lied to Michael, lie to the city lie, he'd be walking to the door because that's not right.
You don't play with nobody live like that, I mean, you know.
That's what I was, that's what I've been hammered and we all hammer on it. There's nothing more important than the safety and welfare of the people of Franklin County. Nothing more important than that. And for that to be, Jeff, I have a problem with it. So that's what I'm saying, I'm not saying you, you can't go, you can't go back, I know we can't, but we can move forward and, and the CEO needs to know what he's walking into. I think he does, he's pretty smart, but he needs to know on this particular thing, what, that, that not only, the most important thing, our staff is being lied to and that, that can't be tolerated. That can't be tolerated, no level.
Hey, Michael, you got your marching order?
Yeah, sir, I do, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I want to clarify something before we move on. I understand what's being said and they, they might be necessary things to be said. What I'm thinking about is the fact that our CEO doesn't really start till next, the twenty-first, next Monday?
Yes.
Okay, and he's not immediately going to be able to fix our EMS problem in the first two or three days. In between then, without us taking some board action to alleviate the problem, we're going to have days, we're still going to have one ambulance in the county and when there's only one, they can't transfer anybody.
So what action would you like for us to take?
I, I don't know because I'm new at this, I don't know if we can bypass our bid policy and emergency enact a, a thirty or sixty day, you know, I don't, I don't know.
How about I find out? How about I get, I, I get a-
You can do that, but now we're three weeks before we're going to meet again.
No, I was gonna, sorry, Commissioner, how about I get a true and accurate roster as to how, the question, the problem I think we're having is how many paramedics do we actually have on the schedule? Let me just cut, cut, cut to the chase. So how about I get that number first and then I, I discuss it with each of you, uh, one-on-one. If we have to have an emergency meeting to, to take some action, we do that. How does the board feel about that?
Yeah.
But I need, I need to know truly and accurately how many paramedics do we have on a, at a time? Because I was told over the weekend we had an ALS and a BLS. From, from hospital staff. I heard from a commissioner, no, we only had one BLS. And so I, I've got to find out exactly what's going on, then I can report to each of you individually and, uh, Mr. Chairman, you let me know if you want me to call up.
Absolutely. They're saying, this thing been out of hand, you know, you could have been, we could, they could have been the son, somebody's school trainer for them over that department from the time this has started. But they so greedy? They want to split the money and all this, that's not right. But what they need to do is, you got people out there and they scared them. They get somebody, they get somebody out there, they get up into this hole, it's so good, but it don't last long. Because you got too many dipping in there who don't pose to be in the, let them people, let some of them do their job. If they supposed to do their job, if they a secretary, be a secretary, lead the ambulance along.
Mike, can you address this to March Town Hall meeting and get back with me and we could have a special meeting if necessary?
Actually, I'll do it with the.
I don't know what action that the board can take, should take, so you need to come with suggestions of what,
I will.
how to rectify the situation.
Actually, I'll.
First thing they need to do is stop letting three people be over. Maintenance man, if he come out there, he, he, we gonna get sued soon as he walk out there and get some poison dust on him and walk in that ambulance.
Actually, well, after the town hall meeting, I'll meet with, I'll meet with administrative staff, get some answers and I'll, I'll get back.
Okay.
With you guys.
Okay. Satisfactory with the board?
That's fine.
We're not trying to hurt nobody here, we're just trying to enhance things, get things run right.
Right.
A lot of them think we're trying to hurt them, we're not. We're trying to get it run right out there.
All right, think we're at number two. At your May first meeting, I was directed to contact your department directors and constitutional officers to discuss any new equipment, additional funds that would increase their requests for the upcoming twenty eighteen, nineteen budget and have them prepare today to discuss any proposed increases. To allow them adequate time to make that determination, I requested that they appear to June fifth meeting to discuss any justifiable increases included on their budget forms. The budget forms are due to finance by June first and justifiable increases that may be on it may or may not proceed after the discussions on June fifth. The board will not approve any request mid-year for new equipment or additional funds if it's not covered during the budget process. So basically, it's a one-time shot. They have a June fifth to come and justify to you. You have time to look it over, discuss it, and at a budget workshop, we'll discuss it, and that's it. No more of these in the middle of the year, you know, oh, I just realized I need blah, blah, blah. Not that, that's not a good way for us to operate, Commissioner. So that's my plan and I just wanted to update this board on, on that plan. Okay. Item number three. Board at your May first meeting, open bids for the Gulf Shore Boulevard relocation project. Dewberry, after reviewing all of the bids, states that Piggott Asphalt and Site Work LLC is the apparent low bidder and I attach a tabulation. However, Dewberry also states that their letter from FDOT listing their approved work classes, hot plant mix, say it for me again? Bituminous course was not listed, which is a requirement in the instructions to the bidders. Mr. Clay Kennedy of Dewberry spoke to Ms. Holly Duggar, Piggott, who informed him that they have applied to be recertified by FDOT and that the hot plant mix bituminous course was added. She also stated that they would be purchasing the asphalt from CW Roberts or Pavey. Piggott is waiting for their approval letter from FDOT and will forward a copy to the board as soon as they get it. Clay Kennedy also spoke with Alan Archery of FDOT, who confirmed that he did apply for the hot plant mix bituminous course last year but was denied because they could not demonstrate sufficient experience in that type of work typically, typically required by that department. Mr. Archery also confirmed that they've applied for the hot plant mix bituminous course again this year, but because their application was currently in review, he could not say whether they would meet the requirements. Knowing all this information, is the board willing to waive this requirement?
No.
No.
For this project?
No. I'm not willing, let, let, Clay, could you come forward, please? Let me, let me say something on this. Look in what's wrote here. The guy, the, the requirements of the bid process required that they have this DOT certification, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, they don't have it. I don't care if they get it next month or they get it six months from now. If they didn't have it, they shouldn't even apply, they shouldn't even have bid on this project. Now, this is the low bidder that was a hundred and something thousand dollars cheaper than everybody else. And they don't have the proper paperwork, is that correct? Am I stating the correct?
I, I think if we're getting technical, I think it's around sixty thousand less, but.
But it's still.
I think, I think they were at one thirteen, I think, uh, North Florida's at one seventy-four.
Yes, sir.
Something like that.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm not arguing.
But they don't have the credentials to even put in the bid for this.
And, and that's why I stated what I stated.
No, I'm not willing to waive it, but what I'm saying is,
I'm not willing to waive it.
I'm not willing to waive it and, and I'm not willing to wait either.
Well, I'd make a motion that we take, take them out the bid.
I think the only way you can do that is to rebid it, ain't it, Clay?
No, sir, I think, I think that you can go to, I apologize.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
I'll, I just want to give the board some legal advice on this issue of waiver. You do have the authority to waive essentially non-material defects in bids, but if they lack the qualifications, uh, then, then they are disqualified and you can't waive that. That won't be a material fact that goes to the heart and the substance of the bid and is not subject to waiver. It's not a minor technical defect, it's a material defect, not subject to waiver.
Now, this is on Gulf Shore Boulevard.
Yes, the relocation, yes, yes, ma'am.
And I'm the commissioner of that district, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm gonna tell you how I feel about it, I think we need to go out and rebid it.
Do we have a second qualifier? Yes.
I think we need to go out and rebid it.
And that's, that's perfectly, I mean, whatever the board decides, that's, that will do.
Do you have a problem with rebidding it?
The, the board has the discretion to reject all bids and re-advertise. You also have the discretion to go to the next, uh, lowest and qualified bidder, that's at the board's discretion. I don't really think about the facts, but that's what the law says.
Yeah, I like it rebidding and I'm gonna make a motion, well.
Can I ask you one question, Commissioner? Do you, unfortunately with Alan's absence, do we have any clue as to the timeline with the funding that will FEMA, penalize us in any way? Or will they, that's the only concern I have, Commissioner, is that it's a FEMA-funded problem.
And this is a discussion that, that Michael and I were having yesterday. We don't know with Alan's absence, we don't know what, what and if there were any timeframes attached to the PW for that repair. My gut tells me that if there was one and we're in the jeopardy of, of running over, we can get an extension. But I don't want to speak on behalf of, because I, I wasn't involved.
And I don't mean no harm by this.
Contingent on your motion, I just wanted you to put that.
Well, and I don't mean no harm by this, but we can't wait for vacations and stuff, we've got to get work done.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree.
See what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
And so you all check that. And if we have to have an extension, go for the extension. Y'all know how to do it, don't you?
Okay.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay, so my motion is to rebid the Gulf Shore Boulevard project.
Okay, okay, so we're rejecting all bids and rebidding?
I'm rejecting all, this board needs to reject all bids and go out and rebid and for the Gulf Shore Boulevard project. And I think it would be fair to do like that, that give everybody a fair level ground.
And, and could you add for us that you, you're giving us authority right now to file an extension if, if necessary?
If you find out, and, and also add to my motion, that if you find out that an extension needs to be filed, this board gives you authority to file it.
Thank you.
In Alan's absence.
We do have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? I, I agree, I agree with that. And, and I don't know why people would apply to do a job when they're not, don't have, clearly tells you in the bid packet, I, what I'm being told and what I'm reading, that you should have this, X, Y, and Z. And if you don't have it, why did you even apply? And number one, I have concerns when you're that far below the next highest bidder. I, I have concerns about the quality of work being done. I just have general concerns about the whole process of him being the, or the company being the low bidder with not having the proper paperwork and everything else. And DOT doesn't recognize him as being able to do the job, I mean, but that's a huge issue for me.
What happened? When we go back and rebid, it's, they rebid. And they, they feel they don't have the quality.
Then, Commissioner, they would be rejected if they're not qualified bidder.
That's correct.
And, and Michael, when you told me this yesterday, what did I tell you?
What you're kind of saying now, right?
I don't change my mind. You know, I mean, if, if it didn't have the right paperwork, it didn't have the right paperwork. And I'm not gonna do nothing that's gonna jeopardize thi- this. And yes, Gulf Shore Boulevard, we've been waiting a long time to do it, but we need to do it right.
You want to be sure it's done right.
We want to do it right.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Clay.
Yes, sir.
Next item?
There are two, uh, item four has two parts, there are two change orders for Roberts and Roberts that require your approval. Uh, the first is for Georgia Street paving project. Finally, Mr. Clay Kennedy of Dewberry has finally received the approved permits and drawings for this project from FDOT. The change order will be paid from District Two paving funds.
Board action, pleasure of the board?
I thought Commissioner Sanders was gonna be really excited.
Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve. I've been waiting so long.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sanders, I heard a second, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, the motion carries.
Did one, one correction, this is from District Two fund, paving funds.
Okay, yeah, that's what it says.
Yeah.
What did I say, District One, I'm sorry, District Two, okay, yeah.
Okay, District Two and District One, okay, I see it.
The second change order is to repaint crosswalks on St. George Island. Commissioner Jones has received numerous complaints of the faded crosswalks that create a safety issue. He would like the crosswalks repainted before the start of the busy tourist season. This change order will be paid from District One paving funds.
Just be done by Roberts and Roberts also?
Yes, both of Roberts and Roberts, and because they're here for Georgia Street, I'm like, let's take advantage of it, let's see if we can get them. Because they have, I mean, Howard could paint it, but they have that thermoflex, what it's called, Commissioner, they have that.
Thermoplasty for some.
Supplies, yeah, it lasts a long, long time and it really needs to be done.
Pleasure of the board?
Second.
Have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, the motion carries.
Down to item six, we are addressed item five already. The county is ready to proceed with advertising RFPs for the repairs to Indian Creek and Timber Island boat, uh, Timber Island docks. Since these are very small projects, is the board willing to waive the bonding requirement for these projects? Waiving the bonding requirements allows smaller companies, local companies to come in and, and bid. If we don't, and Clay, tell me if I'm wrong here, you, you're gonna get bigger companies, you're gonna need bigger companies that can bond to apply for small jobs. Will that happen? We've been down this road before where they're like, this is too small a job, we're not even getting, and then we end up having nobody, uh, uh, apply for these, reply to RFPs.
So do we get a written guarantee as opposed to a bond? I mean, or, or do we just, or do we just let them put boards down, if they fall off, we gotta redo it? I mean, what's the process for that?
No, Commissioner, I apologize.
I want to know, I'm trying to figure out what, what exactly were you're being asked, way, bid bond, performance bond?
The bid bond, um, we're, we're trying to, we didn't know if, if there were certain companies within Franklin County that we were, um, that maybe couldn't get bonded for a certain sized project, but everybody knew them, every, you know, they were qualified workers, qualified contractors and wanted them to have that opportunity to, to be able to bid on these projects. They should be relatively small. One should be around the fifty thousand mark, one should be around the thirty thousand dollar mark.
What are we talking about?
The two docks.
Repairing Indian Creek.
Thirty thousand dollars?
And Timber Island.
Fifty thousand in Indian Creek.
There's, the docks at Indian Creek have already, some of them have been repaired already.
There's, there's one that's in between the boat ramp and the actual canal. There was a, it's been destroyed, it's, it's a FEMA repair.
Farther it, I, I'll have to show you.
Okay.
Goes across the Rock River Betment.
It is five percent bonds, right?
I would like to see the little company get it goes, you know, I done seen a lot of that happen, big companies, when they, when they got a lot of work, they, they, they nothing real, if it ain't no big money.
You had a comment, uh, Attorney Sheila?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the bonding for small companies, when you go through a formal bond to an insurance company, I, I understand exactly, um, where the engineer is coming from, but what you also have allowed other companies to do in lieu of a bond is they can provide you a cashier's check in the amount of five percent of the bid to guarantee that bid that they provided to you and then the, the planning office just holds on to that cashier's check. So there is a mechanism in place already to provide relief for some of these smaller companies as opposed to waiving it. But again, waiving it is within your discretion.
We could do both?
That's, that's fine.
Either, we could do, can we do either or?
I don't think you should, you, I personally think you just need to require the bid bond at five percent with the cashier's check and that, that way they do have the relief, they don't have to go through the bonding company because the bonding requirements are very expensive and you have to provide personal guarantees. Essentially, you get a bond and then you get the bonding company personal guarantee that if they pay the bond, then you have to pay them back. So it's kind of a crazy shell game. But the, the board in the past has provided relief in the form of allowing cashier's checks. But again, waiving the bu- bid bond is also within the discretion of the board, I mean, it's your policy, it's not a state law that I'm aware of.
Keep that money there and they'll do the job right because they know they got it.
Well, this is just a bid bond, make sure that they, they, they stick to their bid. The performance bond is entirely different issue.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask another question for the, is there a reason why we're doing this RFP versus RFQ?
Because we, we got a number, we just want, want a bid. RFQ, you'll have to sit and review.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to know.
Yes, sir.
I think you, you, but you're talking about the one at, uh, Indian Creek is the one that's at the mouth of the creek. This was destroyed during the storm.
Storm.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I was thinking of the ones that are further in, we've already repaired half of those.
It's actually on the bay.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I know what you're.
Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
You're approving the waiver, Commissioner Jones?
Approving what the attorney said.
That, that would be a five percent cash bond in the form of a cashier's check.
Make sure the dock is built correctly.
Well, that, this is a bid bond that we're talking about. When, when someone's awarded the contract, then, then we start talking about perhaps having a performance bond. That really has a department. This is just a bid bond so that when they make the bid, if they're the lowest qualified bidder and if for some reason they, they reneg on the bid, then we're keeping that five percent.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I made it clear, Commissioner, I apologize.
So Commissioner Jones made a motion contingent on what the attorney has said, that we have a second?
Yeah, I'm talking to, and I'm, I'm gonna act, I'm gonna act the lawyer.
Commissioner Sanders had, had made a second, Commissioner Lockley, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, but go ahead, make, make a comment.
Open for discussion?
Yeah, uh, like, like this for the bid bond and you said nothing for the performance of the company. Can you keep both of them to the end?
I think we can work that out once, when we, the board approves the proposal and awards the contract, we can build that into whatever written contract we have with a successful bidder so that if they provide a cashier's check in lieu of a bond, then we can make that same similar provision, uh, in the contract with them and allow them to provide a cashier's check in lieu of a bond.
I, I like to see you put in there where you keep up both of them to the end, that way you make sure you're done, work, working on right.
Oh, we will, we will, absolutely.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor? All opposed, the motion carries.
And number seven, board action to authorize the chairman's signature on a resolution supporting the grant application for a special category grant to install a fire sprinkler system and to renovate the remaining windows in the armory that have not been previously renovated.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, the motion carries.
Item number eight, Commissioner, it's board action to authorize the chairman's signature on a letter of support for a special category grant application to renovate all City Hall and Carabelle. As you know, the historic two-story structure currently house, houses the Carabelle History Museum, but there is no elevator to the second floor restrict, restricting its use. Board has approved several letters for this project in the past.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Further discussion? Michael, just to clarify, the City of Carabelle is applying for this special category grant application. We're just signing a letter of support.
The letter of support, Ms. Tamara Allen, as usual, she, she, every time that cycle comes around, she asks the board for a letter of support.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, the motion carries.
Item number nine, the expiration grant, I'm sorry, the expiration date for the grant from the Division of Historic Resources that is paying for the new door to Fort Coombs Armory is June thirtieth. Mr. Kerrington has spoken with Mr. Warren Emo and although he's ordered the necessary hardware, he cannot guarantee it will be delivered by the manufacturer in time to have the door installed before that deadline. Therefore, I recommend that the board request a thirty-day extension on the grant contract from the Division of Historic Resources.
So moved. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley? Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, the motion carries.
Can I? Who, who installing? Who the contractor?
I have to get that from Mark, sir. I know some, it's somebody Mr. Emo's been working with that specializes in that type of door.
Well, why Emo got the order?
Sir?
Why Emo got the order?
Why, why he's involved?
Why did he have to order the hardware?[1790.88]
Oh, because Emo is our.
Architect, director.
I was gonna say Superman of the armory, but yeah, okay, if you wanna say that, he's been dealing with all the renovation projects for the armory.
He may not have actually ordered the hardware, he may be overseeing the job, and he's just giving us an explanation of why it's not done.
Yeah, cause the timeline, what he basically is giving us a timeline that when the door is ordered from the manufacturer, and then the guy has to come and install it.
I know he's not redoing the door.
Yeah, I know, but that was, and then, why he?
Yeah, no, he's just working as a, as a architect overseeing the job.
He probably did, Mr. Lockley, probably, contractor probably did, he just gave us an explanation.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, okay, so we skip straight down to number twelve, where Pygott Asphalt and Site Work LLC, they'll be starting a project on Avenue B in the city of Carabelle. They're asking the board to allow them to use a vacant county-owned lot, sorry, too many vacancies, directly behind the county's annex building in Carabelle to store materials and equipment until the Avenue B paving project is completed. After the project is completed, they will restore the vacant lot by placing hay and grass seeds.
I make a motion to allow them to use it?
Actually, they're gonna improve the lot when they're through with it, Commissioner, right now it's just a big sandlot.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mathis, second by Commissioner Lockley, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed, the motion carries.
At your April seventeenth meeting, Ms. Deborah Belcher, your C D B, C D B G administrator, while providing an update of future C D B G grants, stated that the board needs to appoint a new C D B G Citizen Advisory Task Force. And this task force will be required to meet. Attached, my report is the membership roster and a notice of the first meeting of this task force, I'm sorry, a public hearing and meeting, task force meeting. Board actions accept the membership and authorize the advertising of the public hearing and meeting.
Pleasure to the board.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lockley?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, the motion carries.
And all this, of course, is in, as we prepare for the new C D B G, uh, funding, uh, cycle. So Commissioner Lockley asked her about that. Uh, number fourteen, this, uh, the city of Carabelle has scheduled a workshop later this month to further discuss the proposal that would allow the county billing official to do the permit inspections within the city. The city of Appalachia Cola stated that they are not interested in changing from their current vendor that is providing these services. Now, I wanna say this publicly, so it's on the record. The offer we were making is a kind of a one-time deal, because the programmer was basically giving us one price to do both city databases for us. So if the city of Appalachia comes back in the future and say, oh, you know, we thought about it, now we wanna do it, the offer will not be the same, because somebody else is gonna have to pay, they will have to pay for the, the development of that database, and I want that to be very, very clear. And I sent that to an email to Ms. Mathis at, at, at the city, and she's aware of that.
So did you have documentation that they did not want to do?
An email, yes, ma'am.
So you got an email?
Yep.
And that's all we're gonna have?
That's, that's on there.
Okay.
And I think the city of Carabelle is having, uh, workshop with the contractors and, and, and the city commission, just to make sure everybody's all on the same page, you know, everybody's expectations are, are the same, I guess. Okay, so that was just an update on that. Finally, the four-hour required ethics training is scheduled for June second, it's from eight A M to twelve noon here in the commission meeting room. Attorney Cox and I will reach out to the cities of Appalachia Cola, Carabelle, South Choppi, Fort St. Joe, and along with the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners, to see if they're interested in attending. If you have a scheduled conflict with this date, contact me as soon as possible. And that ends, oh, just one thing, commissioners, something you guys don't get too often. I got a thank you note from James and Jan Jackson at Squire Road, thanking the commission for the work done at their house through the C D B G program, housing grant, meeting on Tuesday, there's a thank you card for each of you. That doesn't happen too often, so when it happens, I let the board know, okay? And that ends my report.
Anything from Mr. Marone from the board? Thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir.
We'll move to Attorney Shuler, so, County Attorney, report?
Commissioners, I've given you, uh, this morning, a report, no action items, just informational items. I do wanna go back and revisit the staging agreement with Pygott's over on the lot behind the annex in Carabelle. Typically, we have a written staging agreement, kinda like we do with, uh, Duke Energy when they wanna stage out of the airport. Very basic, basically, if, if they cause harm to the property, or they cause harm to an individual, then they're gonna be financially responsible for it, not the county.
Oh.
So there needs to be a, a basic, uh, staging agreement, I'll be happy to draft that and send it to them, 'cause I, I doubt they have an attorney that drafts any of their documents for them, but I just wanna make sure the board was aware of that, and you all, y'all approved of me preparing that staging.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we have Attorney Shuler and Michael.
Yes.
Second.
And I apologize, they should have said the whole.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Mathis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Any, anything for the attorney from board members? We're now move down to commissioner comments. Any commissioner comments the board members would like to make this morning? There be a new com-
Let me ask a question, oh. Michael, what's you?
Yes, sir.
Can paving money be used for lights?
Lights, what type of lighting? You mean like?
Streetlights?
Street lighting?
Street lighting, yeah.
Hmm, I would need to go back and review the ordinance that you adopted for the, uh, basically your, your tax for that. I, I don't have an answer for you right now, Commissioner Lockley, but I'll get an answer for you.
Well, I guess my question was, the reason I asked you, because they doing that basketball court out there, and I don't know whether we're gonna have enough money to put the lights in, or I was gonna, if they didn't, I was gonna see, can I use some of the payers?
Yeah, I, I don't wanna give a, uh, you know, shooting from the hip answer on that, I mean, it's, uh, something I'll look into and report back to you, hopefully before the end of the day, as to what, what, what's your specific question, is can we use gas tax monies to put lighting out at D W Wilson Park?